Will now come to order at 6:31 PM. Roll call, Vice President Ludwig.
Here.
Mr. LeBlanc.
Here.
This is Lima.
Here.
This is Shockley.
Here.
President Dixon here. Vice President Ludwig, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and describe the emergency evacuation plan. Please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Exit is in the back of the public to the left.
This evening, we will have a moment of silence for Gary Cody, who passed away on Sunday. We have also lowered the flag today, and it will stay lowered for one week. Mr. Cody was elected to the town council in November 2012. He served as president from December 10th, 2012, to November 2014. He was elected again in November 2018 and was president and resigned December 16th, 2020. We offer our sympathy to his family and friends. Former President Cody had a passion for life and a fighting spirit, especially relating to his commitment to the town. Please stand for a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated. First item is executive, I'm sorry, is council meeting minutes. Madam Clerk, did you receive any corrections for July 18th, August 22nd or August 29th? Reference pages five to forty-six.
I received corrections for July 18th and August 22nd, and August 29th was fine.
Have the corrections been made?
I just received one tonight, so that one will be made on the July 18th meeting, and the rest were made.
Thank you. We'll take the ones that have been changed, may I have a motion and second to approve the amended minutes for July 18th and August 22nd.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, Vice President Ludwig.
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc.
Yes.
Mrs. Lima.
Yes.
Mr. Shockley.
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon, yes. Five yeas, no nays. And may I have a motion and second to approve the minutes for August 29th?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. A second, please.
A second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, Vice President Ludwig.
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc.
Yes.
Mrs. Lima.
Yes.
Mr. Shockley.
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon, yes. Five yeas, no nays. The motion passes. Agenda B three.
President Dixon, yes. Before we move on, if I could just address the clerk, I'm assuming one of the corrections you received for the August 22nd minute, 22nd meeting minutes was line 467 for President Dixon's last name.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, just want to be sure. Thank you. That is all.
Thank you. Agenda B three, ratification of the Joint Town Council and School Building Committee meeting minutes for October 19th, 2022, and October 26th, 2022. Reference pages forty-seven to forty-eight. Madam Clerk, did you receive any corrections?
I did not.
Okay. May I have a motion, second to approve the meeting minutes?
Make a motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Ask a question.
Yes.
So in on both of those minutes, it says the minutes were taken by the recorder of the school building project. See those minutes for details. Wasn't actually sure where to get those details. Are we just record, are we just approving this piece of paper?
I believe we're approving the meeting minutes that Mrs. Lima has sent forward. Is that correct?
The meeting minutes of the School Building Committee have been taken by Amy Anzalone, and those minutes in full have been posted on the School Building Committee landing page of the Coventry School Department website.
Thank you. So what we're approving is the recording that I took as council president because we had three people from the council present at that meeting. So if you want to see details of the meeting, we rely on the minutes that Mrs. Anzalone took for the meeting. But only three of us could vote on them anyway because only three of us are at the meeting.
Yeah, I was gonna say, do you want us to abstain then?
Yes.
Okay.
It's only, only Mrs. Lima and Mrs.
Well, technically, I believe Mr. LeBlanc was at the 26th.
That's right, too. Correct. Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes, which reference the meeting minutes that are already posted. So I'll call the roll call. Ms. Ludwig.
Abstain.
Abstain. Mr. LeBlanc.
Technically, need to abstain for the 19th. But I'll approve the 26th.
Okay, then we'll do one at a time then. Have motion and second to approve the meeting minutes for October 19th.
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
To LeBlanc. Excellent. Okay. Now the roll call vote for October 19th. Ms. Ludwig.
Abstain.
Mr. LeBlanc.
Abstain.
Abstain. Mrs. Lima.
Yes.
Mr. Shockley.
Yes.
President Dixon, yes. Three yeas, two abstain. Motion passes. Next, a motion and a second to approve the minutes for October 26th, 2022.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, Vice President Ludwig.
Abstain.
Mr. LeBlanc.
Yes.
Mrs. Lima.
Yes.
Mr. Shockley.
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon, yes. Four yeas, no nays, one abstain. The motion passes. Next, Agenda B four, Certificate of Recognition to Catherine Patno. Mrs. Patno, would you please come forward? This is a certificate of recognition for Catherine M. Patno. The Coventry Town Council recognizes the contributions of Catherine M. Patno as a leader and parent, always advocating for strong public education for the Town of Coventry community. Catherine Patno is an elected member of the Coventry School Committee, serving from 2002 to 2022. She has been its chair from 2008 to 2022. Simultaneously, she served as a proactive leader of the Rhode Island Association of School Committees from 2009 to 2022, and served as Chair and Executive Board Member. Catherine Patno was also an energetic parent, serving as a member and leader on the Rhode Island Parent Teacher Association from 1999 to 2014, and on the National Parent Teacher Association from 2003 to 2007. In 2022, the Coventry Public Schools is educating 4,359 students in grades 3K through 12, and manages a fiscal year budget for 22 to 23 of $76,389,151. During the past five years, the graduation rate has increased from 85% to 91%. The Coventry Town Council is happy to recognize one of its education leaders and partner, Catherine Patno, in testimony thereof, and on behalf of the Honorable Town Council, I have here on Tuesday set my hand and cause the seal of the town to be affixed on this 14th day of November, 2022. Congratulations, Kathy. Please come forward. Is there any member of the council would like to say a few words? Okay, Ms. Ludwig.
Ms. Patno, thank you very much for your many years of service. I know that you are in officially District Two, which is on my side. However, I know that you've served the town faithfully across all of the districts for many, many years. Thank you for your time and your efforts. I know it's been a long time, but it's, it's been needed. Thank you for stepping up year after year.
Thank you so much. Kathy, it's been a great pleasure working with you when I was on the school committee and continuing all the work that we've been doing in subcommittees, and I'm gonna miss working with you, but I know that you'll be close by. So thank you so much. It's a long time serving. Thank you. You have a few words you'd like to say to us?
Oh, just thank you so much for this honor. I feel humbled to accept it, quite honestly, especially with the rest of the honorees tonight. They're all well-deserving, and so I'm glad to be among the honorees tonight. So thank you all for honoring me, and I've enjoyed my time in Coventry, obviously.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, all of you.
Thank you. Our next certificate of recognition is for Donna Clooney, and I believe her husband is here, so please come up, Mr. Clooney. Come forward, Donna. The Coventry Town Council recognizes the service of Donna Clooney, who served as an elected member of the Coventry School Committee from 2014 to 2022. She has an, she was an active member by attending meetings and serving on the Bylaws Committee and the Superintendent Evaluation Committee. The Town Council appreciates the work she did to improve the education of our students in pre-K through grade 12. In testimony thereof, and on behalf of the Honorable Town Council, I have here on Tuesday set my hand and cause the seal of the town to be affixed on this 14th day of November, 2022. Come forward, Donna. Okay, thank you. Is there anyone, council member, who would like to say a few words?
I would just like to say thank you for stepping up and for being a voice for our schools and for our children. You were always an active member of the school committee since I've lived in the town, and it really is appreciated, and I hope people follow your lead and join public service because it's a volunteer organization, and if people don't come forward to have their voice heard, then we won't be able to run the way we do. So once again, it's really appreciated that you stepped up the way you did.
Thank you. And Donna, I greatly appreciate the time that you've spent on the school committee. I know it's a very difficult job, being responsible for so many students in our community from pre-K through 12, and you also manage the students in the transitional program through, I believe, age 21. It's a big responsibility, and the community appreciates the work that you've done. Thank you so much. Comments, Donna? Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I worked with Ann for, you know, we were on the Superintendent's Evaluation Committee together, and it was, I enjoyed it. I learned a lot. I'll tell you, and you know, Ann was the one, she sat next to me, and she said, you're not going to be able to do anything for the first four years except learn, and, and she's absolutely right. The second four years is when you, you can take action, you know, you know what you're doing. So, and I hope that others do step up because we do need people to, to run this, that's gonna keep the town going. So thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you, Donna. Okay. The next certificate of recognition is to Julie Letty. Please come forward, Julie. This is a certificate of recognition for Julie Letty. The Coventry Town Council recognizes Julie Letty for her 25 years of service with the Coventry Housing Authority and the Coventry Housing Associates. The authority was organized in 1963 to provide affordable housing opportunities and comprehensive programs to low-income households for the citizens of the Town of Coventry. Constructed in 1967, Noddy Oak Village was the first public housing development in Coventry. Under its director, Julie A. Letty, the organization strives for excellence, professionalism, and compassion as it seeks innovative and efficient ways, methods to accomplish its goals. The management of these properties has consistently been rated as high-performing by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. The Coventry Town Council is happy to recognize Julie A. Letty for her service and commitment to the community. In testimony thereof, and on behalf of the Honorable Town Council, I have here on Tuesday set my hand and cause the seal of the town to be affixed this 14th day of November, 2022. Congratulations, Julie. Any member of the council like to make any statements? Julie, would you like to make any statements about your wonderful 25 years?
But I'm not retiring like others. That's more fun. I can't believe it's been 25 years.
Oh, thank you. I can't believe it's been 25 years. I want to say I started when I was 14, but that's not possible either, but I'm not gonna here for another 25, but I'm gonna do the best that I can do while I'm still here. Thank you for the recognition.
Thank you. You're welcome. The next certificate of recognition is to William Markcott. Mrs. Lima will read the certificate. Mr. Markcott, please come forward.
If any intel on this is off, blame some people in your tribe. All right. Honoring Coventry resident and business owner, William Bill Markcott. Whereas the Markcott family has been a part of the fabric of Coventry community for nearly a century, and whereas the Markcott family founded Crystal Cleansers 76 years ago, offering Coventry residents and nearby Rhode Islanders a premier local option for high-quality dry cleaning services. And whereas Bill Markcott, a Coventry High School class of 1968 graduate, has successfully continued the legacy of his parents and the family-owned business, choosing to keep the business right here in his hometown. And whereas Bill has given thousands of hours of his time running a small business to the Coventry community through service on, on various groups and committees, including serving on the Coventry Board of Canvassers for the last 10 years, ensuring the free and fair administration of numerous elections. And whereas Bill has chosen to start the next chapter of his life with retirement, selling his business to local Rhode Islanders to keep the family business in Coventry. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town, Coventry Town Council send its very best wishes and gratitude to Bill Markcott and the Markcott family for being a positive pillar in our community as a resident and business owner for all the contributions they've made decade after decade. In testimony whereof, and on behalf of the Honorable Town Council, I have here on Tuesday set my hand and cause the seal of the town to be affixed this 14th day of November, 2022. Congratulations.
Would any member of the council like to say a few words?
I'll say something.
Okay, Mrs. Lima.
I'm just so happy for you, and I wish you nothing but the best in retirement, but I, I think that what people love about Bill is that endearing, old-school quality of someone who spent, spent their whole life in their community, giving to their community, and making their livelihood in the community, and it's been part of your family's history as well, and so, you know, your story is one that this town should cherish, and I'm so glad we're elevating it here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And your familiar face at election time, Mr. Markcott. And it's a pleasure to see you here with us this evening for non-official duty, but we always could rely on you for your professionalism, your respect for the process, and for the election process, and keeping that Board of Canvassers working very, very smoothly. So we greatly appreciate the time that you have spent in that particular role. So thank you.
Thank you.
A true public servant. Thank you.
Thank you. It's an honor and a pleasure. Thank you.
You're welcome. The next certificate is for Christopher D. Paola, and with Mr. John Parenti, please come forward and bring other members who are with you this evening. Please introduce the person who's with you.
Good evening, everyone. Steve Conti is the, excuse me. Steve is the other half of DePonte Communications. The last four letters of the Antis, the first three letters of the Apollos. Chris is the co-owner.
Okay, it's a pleasure to have you with us.
Great to be here, guys. Thank you very much.
We're gonna read the certificate, and we will provide more than one certificate so that you may have one in Westerly for the parents of Christopher, okay, but we'll give one to you this evening.
Thank you.
Okay. Certificate of Recognition, Christopher D. Paola. The Coventry Town Council recognizes the achievements in service of Christopher D. Paola, who died in Westerly, Rhode Island on October 14th, 2022. Christopher was the voice of Westerly and owner of several radio stations, including WBLQ Westerly and WWRI broadcasting on I-105.5 FM and 1450 AM. On the local station in Coventry, residents, town council members, school committee members, town managers, and superintendents of school found a welcoming vehicle to share information and talk informally with the host, John Parenti. Chris's service to his community through the use of radio and through his endless participation in charity causes was legendary. The Coventry Town Council will long remember Christopher D. Paola. In testimony thereof, and on behalf of the Honorable Town Council, I have here on Tuesday set my hand and cause the seal of the town to be affixed this 14th day of November, 2022.
Thank you very much.
I'm so glad you were happy to join.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for having us.
Is there any member of the council who would like to say a few words? Mrs. Lima.
Really glad that we could honor him in this way tonight. For those who may not know, I, I think it's an, it's an honor and a privilege that 105.5 and WWRI chose Coventry to host another station in the DePonte Communications family. They provided an instant breadth of, of life and communication and community and pride as this proclamation provides. And I, you know, I look forward to continuing to support the station and his memory. I, I met Chris probably six years ago at another job down in Westerly, and he was just someone you could instantly bond with over a love of broadcasting and community and, and communicating, and understanding what could bring people together. So I'll choose to remember him like that and thank him for his contributions, as well as the rest of the team with DePonte for what they've done for the Town of Coventry. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other comments? Okay, thank you. And as I said, we'll provide additional copies of the certificate so that you may share a copy with his parents, and one for your station and one for the Westerly station. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, guys.
You're welcome. The next certificate is to Anne Marie Dixon, whoever she is.
You can't read it yourself, Anne.
So I, I am honored to read the certificate of recognition tonight. The Coventry Town Council recognizes the many contributions of Town Council President Anne Marie Dixon within our community. Whereas Anne Dixon has dutifully represented her constituents in multiple elected positions, starting as the District One Coventry School Committee Member in 2012, and re-elected in 2016. Anne went on to represent her district as an elected town councillor in 2018. Also, Anne became Coventry Town Council President by unanimous vote in November 2020. Whereas Anne Dixon has committed herself to many volunteer organizations and positions throughout our community, including, but not limited to, education, human services, land preservation, school buildings, safety, future comprehensive planning, and I'm sure many others I haven't listed. Anne was appointed to multiple town committees, both during her time.
I read my own certificate.
As an elected representative, as well as president. Whereas Anne Dixon, as president of the Town Council from November 2020 through this year, helped drive transparency and increased communication between the Town of Coventry and our residents, and fostered a culture of conversation amongst the councillors, asking for feedback and encouraging a collaborative path forward. And now Kim will read.
Now therefore be it resolved that the Honorable Town Council of the Town of Coventry, on behalf of its citizens, extends its sincerest appreciation to Anne Marie Dixon for her many years of representation and volunteerism within our community. We thank Anne for her service to District One and the residents of the Town of Coventry. In testimony whereof, I have here on Tuesday set my hand and cause the seal of the Town of, Town to be affixed this 14th day of November, 2022.
I would like to, I would like to make some, some comments. Please indulge me a little bit. I've, I've always been a strong advocate of public service. So when I moved to Coventry, I answered a call for members for the Charter Review Commission. I started my 12-and-a-half-year public service here in 2010. When the opportunity arose to run for Town Council in 2018, I thought that would be a good challenge. I didn't realize how big a challenge it would be. There were similarities between the first two years and the last two years. Each had members with strong personalities, and each was trying to keep the town on an even course. During the first two years, the search for a town manager and then the finance director was very consuming. The candidate field was slim. Public service is not a growth industry. The current council has been discussing many critical issues that are coming to our head or have been lingering and perhaps forgotten for many years. Compared to those years, the first two years seemed like a quiet walk in the park. These last two years can best be described as a race, sprinting from one crisis to another. My adrenaline is in a constant state of pumping through my veins. The current council has bright, articulate members who want to do the right thing for the community. I am convinced of that. We have shared goals, which I identified when I first ran for council. We want to develop a plan for financial stability for Coventry. We want to optimize operational efficiency and increase transparency in budgeting. We want to build a consensus for the vision for our future in Coventry. We want to restore trust in our local government, and we want to promote Coventry as a vibrant community. I do have two disappointments, personal disappointments for District One. My district, my biggest disappointment has been my inability to improve the quality of life relating to the turbine issues. I live outside the target area, but there are evenings when I wake up in the middle of the night and I feel a vibration. I race to my window, I pull up the window, and I hear nothing. Is it the infamous infrasound? I promoted a legal review with Council McGilvery, who determined that there was nothing that could be done regarding the flicker and sound issues. Very disappointing results. I also met with the West Warwick Finance Director recently to talk about the three turbines that West Warwick owns, to determine if there was room for negotiation. The deal West Warwick has is too lucrative. All I learned is that Coventry came to the table too naive and/or too late to negotiate and change the course of history. The second disappointment I have is that there seems to be a passive aggressiveness on the part of the voters. My efforts to motivate grassroots efforts and promotion of local associations to promote preservation of the local character of the community has failed. Although I've had meetings and town halls, voices need to be heard before the voice at the ballot box. Voices need to be heard before there is a perceived crisis such as a development, a housing development, et cetera. On the council, I have noted the last couple of years, much more partisanism, with members advocating for their district and not the entire council. I want you all to think town. We are one town. There is less respect and tolerance for divergent opinions, with several incidences of social media comments, eye-rolling, nonverbals that are recorded on YouTube versions of our meetings. These are disturbing to viewers and myself. Please think respect and tolerance. There is a clear mandate, based on the November vote for the town referendums, that our people want a change. There are four of you, plus one new member, who will need to heed the voice of the people. Think change. I'm an optimist, and I believe that council members will settle in. They will do what is right for the community and with their relationships with others, both on this side of the street and on the other side, and with the community. So I describe my journey in public service as a ride that alternates between being in a bumper car, riding with different targets, to a carousel ride with melodic music and nicely prancing horses, all moving in the same direction, to a roller coaster ride. But we always have to remember, rowing as a team gets us to the finish line quicker, and we will win the race. So my service in council is ending. My public service will not end with my continuing participation on community affairs. And I want to thank all of you who are sitting here with me for the opportunity that you've given me to serve the people of the community and also to serve as your president. I really greatly valued this opportunity. I've had to serve my community and to serve with each of you. Thank you. Now, some good news. Presentation by Clifton Lawson Allen, CPA firm of the Town of Coventry's 2021 Financial Audit. Who will be presenting this evening?
Ron Nasik.
Ron Nasik?
Yes.
Okay, and who else is with you?
Steven Gross.
Hello, Steven. Welcome. We've met you both before.
If I can approach the...
Certainly. Thank you. This looks very official. We'll show it to the members of the public. We just received a nice handout.
Let a little bit of an easier track through. What I'm going to go through with you here this evening will simply be the expected reporting results of our engagement, some really high-level, small amount of financial highlights related to the financial statements as they exist. Just make you aware of some final communications that will come to you once we are issued, and then take any questions you might have relative to the audit process or anything relative to the financial statements. Steve, I guess back up. Steve's the engagement manager. I'm the engagement partner. Steve's handing out the draft financial statements as well as our management advisory letter and the federal single audit, which has some information in it relative to financial reporting, internal controls, and compliance with your major federal programs that we tested as part of Uniform Guidance, formerly the federal single audit. So if you want to grab that slide deck that I handed out to you, as I said, on the agenda page...
Point of information, are we able to share this presentation so members of the public or people watching at home can see what we're seeing?
The PowerPoint presentation, are we able to share this?
I did not send over an electronic version. I can send that tomorrow morning if you'd like it for the record.
And we'll post it on our website.
Okay.
And just for members of the public, we received this copy of the PowerPoint presentation, which will be posted. We also received the Town of Coventry Annual Financial Report. Fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021. 160 pages long. Go ahead, Ms. Nasik.
Okay. Yep. So we'll go over, as I said, Audit Scope, expected reporting results, some financial highlights, and then I'm just going to make you aware or present to you what the final communications will be topically. We have yet to draft those. It'll probably be drafted by the end of this week. So from the perspective of Audit Scope, which really this is the bulk of what we're doing, and in the financial statement, there's a draft audit opinion in there, that really, from a legal perspective, is the only thing that belongs to us. Everything else is the representations of management relative to the financial position and results of operations of the financial statements or the financial activities of the town for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2021. So we perform our audit actually under three sets of standards. All governmental audits are at least under two sets of standards, and then relative to the third, if you do have federal program expenditures, federal grant expenditures in excess of $750,000, you're subject to Uniform Guidance or a federal single audit as well. So primarily, we're performing the engagement under generally accepted auditing standards. The results of that are embodied in that opinion that's in those financial statements that you have. That's page one of that report. And then we also are required to perform the audit under generally accepted governmental auditing standards, which includes a separate report that's in your federal single audit that relates to financial reporting, internal controls, and relates to compliance relative to compliance matters, grants, compliance, could be debt covenant compliance, that violation thereof would be deemed material to the financial statements. So in that report, there is some reporting on internal controls as well as compliance. And then finally, under Uniform Guidance, again, or federal single audit, if you will. The scope is somewhat similar to the governmental auditing standards. The only difference is it's a far narrower focus. It's only on your major federal programs. There were three major federal programs that were tested as part of the federal single audit this year. We have to go through a risk assessment in order to determine what those major programs are. That risk assessment is driven by AICPA standards that we have to follow. But in the end, we report on internal control matters related to the major federal programs, and we relate, we report actually a pine on compliance relative to those major federal programs. So, reporting results, so I'm on deck, slide five here. And as you see, all of them are draft. Everything is stamped draft that's in front of you because that is the status of the financial statements, the federal single audit at this point in time. Under generally accepted auditing standards, we anticipate issuing an unmodified opinion or a clean audit opinion on the financial statements, which basically will state that, in our opinion, they barely represent the financial position and results of operations of the town for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2021. Under the governmental auditing standards report, relative to internal control, we did identify deficiencies in internal control, three or four of which we determined to be material weaknesses and one that we determined to be a significant deficiency. Those are in the federal single audit report that you have right now. Those are findings 2000-001-001 through 004 or 005, Steve. Okay. And relative to compliance, there were no compliance matters that were disclosed during the performance of our audit relative to Yellow Book or governmental auditing standards. Under federal single audit or uniform guidance, slide seven, you see the three programs that I referred to earlier that were tested. So we tested the child nutrition cluster, which is the school lunch program, and two COVID-19 programs, which were deemed by the federal government to be high risk. So when I talked about the risk assessment process that we have to go through, in certain occasions, that whole process is actually taken away from us. The federal government tells us that we have to treat a particular program as a major program because it is high risk and in regards to COVID money. And oftentimes, it will be, if it's a brand-new grant, first-year grant, that has quite a bit of compliance requirements attached to it, federal government will determine it to be high risk because no one has any experience administering or administering that grant. Therefore, they want to make sure that the auditors are looking at it. So from an internal control perspective, we did have a finding relative to the procurement policy under the child nutrition cluster. The federal procurement policies did change, I think probably three or four years ago now. I don't think there's a lot of tweaks that have to happen to the procurement policy at the school department in order to bring it into compliance, but currently, it is not in compliance with what the federal program says it needs to be. Relative to compliance over those major federal programs, we are issuing an unmodified or clean audit opinion on compliance relative to the three programs that I mentioned. Next slide, getting into just a couple of financial highlights related to the financial statements. Most of these do come into play relative to ratings, bond ratings. So that's why I bring them to your attention, and they're worthy of comment, I guess, at any point in time. But first and foremost would be the unassigned fund balance in the general fund as of June 30, 2021. That amount, as of that date, is $15,559,733. That represents 13.98% of your total budgetary expenditures and transfers out. The current guidance that GFOA issues relative to fund balance is anywhere from 7.5% to 16%. So you're certainly within that window through COVID. That was inching up. I think it, probably following the Federal Reserve, it's starting to slow down. It's inch up. But certainly, I think you're comfortably within the range of where you want to be relative to having the liquidity to operate the town on an ongoing basis. Overall, your fund balance increased almost $1.4 million year over year. And in the next slide, this is your budgetary statement, and I know these are not the easiest things to read. It's tough to get a financial statement condensed down into a slide deck. But nonetheless, what I would focus on here is that last column, the variance column, and you can see where your hits and misses were relative to budget versus actual. The actual revenue collected outperformed your budgetary estimates by almost $5 million. However, the actual expenditures came in over budgetary appropriations for the year by almost $3 million. So overall, you have about a $3 million budgetary surplus in the general fund, you know, for the end of the fiscal year, which clearly is a good thing. You know, your fund balance went up both from a gap perspective and a budgetary perspective. Again, I leave it to you to look at the variances relative to where you missed and why you missed, and if there's any tweaking relative to the budgetary process that perhaps you need to undertake. The next slide is your long-term debt as of June 30, 2021. There's two slides on this. One is just the governmental activities. So this is basically what's tied to all your governmental funds. And then the second slide is the business-type activities. There's far less activity over on that side. The one that I bring to your attention here, our total long-term debt was almost $230 million at the end of the fiscal year. The net pension liability as of the end of the year was 157. So it's in excess of 50% of your overall debt burden, if you will. I recognize, and I'm sure you recognize, the fact that that pension liability is not going to be called. It's not going to be due tomorrow. But all of your pension funds are somewhere in the 50% to 55% funded range. And market conditions in 2022, which we all are aware of, I'm sure, didn't do pension plans any favors relative to the decline in the market. So I would anticipate, when you're looking at your 2022 numbers, that liability is going to have increased probably quite a bit, depending on what your asset allocation models were within the pension funds. But as of 2021, it was $157 million. Your OPEB liability, again, not due in one day, but that's about $27.5 million as of June 30, 2021. And your business-type activities, there really, again, wasn't a lot of activities, just some bonds and capital leases. There were no additional new debt that was issued, or there was no additional new debt that was issued. The only activity going on in there was the planned paydown on existing debt in accordance with the debt schedules. The required communications, as I said, I'm not going to read through these bullets, but we will issue formal communication to you, those charged with governance, once we are issued with the financial statements that will address any areas that we need to disclose to you or communicate to you under these classifications or categories. You know, relative to what I'm envisioning, I think we'll have some information in there, obviously, under uncorrected misstatements and corrected misstatements. I don't know if there's anything else that's going to go in there other than what we're all aware of right now, is I'm standing here talking to you about 2021, and we're closing in on 2023. So certainly, there were some delays relative to the completion of the engagement, and those will be disclosed in that communication. So that was all I was going to go over with you. Our contact information, both mine and Steve's, is in the last page of this. Please feel free to reach out to us or reach out to us through the town manager or through the finance office. We're more than happy to address any questions that you have via phone call, via email, or I'm here to answer any questions you might have this evening as well. So I'll turn it back to you, manager.
Thank you, Mr. Nasik. Thank you. And Mr. Gross, thank you for your work in engaging with our community. And I'd like to turn it over to the council members who may have questions. We can start with Mr. LeBlanc. Questions, please?
Sure. Thank you very much for your presentation. There were some concerning comments related to the material weakness that certainly we need to look into. Could you just talk about, on the balance sheet, the negative net position of $115 million? Sorry, that's page 13 of the draft financial statements.
Page 13, it said?
Yeah. Just for anybody listening, if they're looking at the balance sheet, when they see that negative net position, what that represents?
Yeah, for the most part, that's going to be driven by that pension and OPEB liability, to be quite honest with you. You know, government financial statements until Gatsby 34 weren't, you know, they weren't established to report based on full accrual accounting. And so there was never a drive to build net position from a full accrual perspective. It's really only the general fund, quite honestly, that ever holds net position, if you will, because it needs it to roll over year to year if there's a decline in tax collections, or if there's a delay in the billing for tax collections. So it was never, not that you wouldn't like to be in a positive net position, but as long as you have unfunded debt, and as I said, $157 million is unfunded right now, actually, over 180 when you add in the OPEB, that's going to drive you into a deficit position.
And then just for anybody listening, you would prefer that it wouldn't be a negative $115 million. We would want to be closer to zero, correct?
Ideally, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Just wanted to highlight that for anybody. Essentially, what that is saying, that our liabilities are far exceeding our assets. Essentially what that is saying, that our liabilities are far exceeding our assets in this town, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And then I don't know if this is a question for you or maybe Mr. Marchand, but I, I took a peek at the June 30th of 2021 internal financial statements. And it essentially had reflected a $3.5 million surplus at June 30th of 2021. But when I look at the statements that we're getting tonight, I don't, I don't see that number or, or number close to that on the, you know.
So if you look on page 80, if you look on page 87, the actual surplus is 2.9, so it's $500,000 difference. So that's, that's your answer. You're, you're asking me, it's 3.5 and this says on page 87 of the financials, it says 2.951.
Okay, hang on one second.
Sure.
So when I looked at the June 30th of 2021 internal reporting, we had total revenues of about $112 million. But based off of the draft financial statements, we have about 123 million. And then when I look at the total expenditures per the June 30th, 2021 internal, it's 108 million. When I look at the giraffe financial statements, it's 122 million. So I just didn't know why there were such significant swings.
There isn't significant swings. If you look on page 87 of the financials, I know it might be.
I'm just looking at the, the balance sheet and the P and L, the regular one right up front.
Yeah, but you have to go to page 87 to get just the fund 110. So you want to explain the Gatsby 54 and on my financials.
No, you're just, you're looking at, at, I understand the confusion, but you're looking at two different measurement focuses. Your upfront statements are measured under GAAP.
Correct.
And what, what the finance director is referring to back in RSI 1 is measured under budgetary accounting, which there are differences. They can be substantial. Sometimes they're, 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 you know, inconsequential, but they can be substantial.
So they're substantial, okay. And I'm highlighting this for a reason.
Yep.
Because if we're to make decisions not based off of GAAP, we can get ourselves into trouble. And I just wanted to highlight that because there's been contention on whether we're dealing with cash basis, accrual basis, what type of reporting internally. And I'm just trying to educate using this presentation. So thank you very much. So there are material differences between GAAP and the internal statements that we're getting, is my point. And there, and I get their reasons, but I just wanted to call that out.
So Ron, would it be beneficial to explain the difference between the 2.9, which is what we use for budget to actual with the Gatsby 54 adjustments? And, and there's a $2 million adjustment for the sewer of the release of the due to from, because the town wasn't paying their sewer and they released a due to from between the funds. So that's the $2 million difference. That's what's material. So I, do you want to get into that explanation so everyone in the public knows?
Your, your, your general fund has a roll up. There are other funds under Gatsby 54, I think you're aware of this, that get rolled up into the general fund because they don't meet the definition, definition of a special revenue fund under Gatsby. For the most part, it's funds that if, if it's, if their primary source of revenue is the government itself, you're just sending a transfer into a fund on an annual basis for it to do something with a general fund appropriation. Gatsby 54 says that's not a special revenue fund. Pull it into your general fund for financial reporting purposes. You can carve it out for, for your accounting purposes, but for financial reporting, it gets rolled up. So there, there, again, is, there's going to be built in differences in there that can't really take you to, from, from apples to apples.
Thank you. One more question. I, I see that the statements still have draft on them and the auditor's opinion is still not stamped. What is holding up the statements from being issued?
So right now it's in tech review through our, our national tech review group. We are still waiting on the MTP schedules from the school department. They have to be included in the audited financial statements and they are addressed in the opinion that we have, have traced them back to the underlying data related to the financial statement. So even if we were at a technical review right now, we're not. But even if we were, we wouldn't be in a position to be able to issue because we need those schedules to be included in the financial statements.
So do you have an ETA on where we're actually going to be able to issue these statements? We're already about 16 months since year end, so.
Yeah, no, I, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, state's part of that, that equation. And I think their primary, their primary workforce, all retired, to be quite honest with you, I think at the end of last year's cycle. And so they're, they're not exactly real quick and turnaround relative to MTP. I, I would anticipate, you know, will be issued probably within a week. But again, if, if for some reason that gets held up even longer, again, there's nothing, I will pick up the phone and, and call the state, but I don't know how much success we'll have in, in greasing that skid, if you will.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thanks. The questions, Vice President Ludwig, question?
I think you already answered part of this, so just kind of building off the last question. So it sounds like we're not going to be in a position to use these numbers just yet until everything's signed off to actually start the next audit process.
Thank you. These numbers are accurate and final. We don't expect any changes.
We've not anticipated any changes to the, to the financial data, yeah.
So it's just the formality of getting the final sign offs to remove draft and, and go forward. But these are essentially the finished financial statements.
Okay, so we can, we can use the numbers themselves as a start to the next audit process?
Yes.
Okay. And then Councilwoman May ask a question. So were you, I just want to make sure I understood your point. So you're saying where you, or I miss, I guess I should say, were you saying we should be looking at the audit number or at the monthly financial number for the difference there?
I'm saying that there's two versions of how these numbers are being accounted for. And the one that we were using for internal reporting on a monthly basis does not include what the presenter said.
Yeah, the roll ups, the other funds, yeah, other funds.
Or significant year end adjustments that can be significant and material. And if we're going to use internal statements that don't have said adjustments, we can make poor choices ultimately.
Okay.
That's why timely issued financial statements from a third party are so important, at least in my view.
Okay, Ms. Mills?
Yeah, can I, I'd just like to add to that. So the Gatsby 54 and all those roll ups. So it's, it's not super complex as it sounds. What is reported on a monthly basis is our budget to actual. The Gatsby 54 are just funds that do not qualify for special revenue. And actually, this finance department is in the process of bringing them into the general fund right now as we speak. So that, that piece of it is going to get cleaned up. We had the biggest, the biggest change in, is a $2 million adjustment to a release of a sewer fund due to from, from the general fund to the funding 1,000 sewer fund. So that was not budgeted. And that is something that the, the town was not paying their sewer bill to the, to the sewer, sewer fund, but to release, but there was a huge due to from because the general fund has been paying a substantial amount of there, if there's any overages or as far as if there's not enough funds to pay the bond payment, et cetera. So, I mean, not to sound so frightful, if you took that away, the difference is 500,000. So the 2,000, excuse me, the $2 million sewer adjustment, which was a resolution passed on 11/20/20 by a town council and to release that. That's a one-time thing. It was a, it was a resolution. It's not going to be an adjustment every time. It's not a, it's not an audit adjustment in the sense that we didn't do our accounting right. It's an adjustment because there's a resolution that a town council approved to release that due to from. And it hit as an expense on the general fund. So just to clarify, that's a one-time thing.
I have one last question. Certainly. So with all of the recommendations, this is probably for Manager Marchand, with all of the different recommendations here and some of the, you know, material differences, do you have, do you have any sort of insight? Like how, how are we going to be looking at this as, you know, maybe similar to how we did when we had the consultant come in and do the performance review? Or how do we kind of measure ourselves and make sure that all of these things are not continuing to happen?
Yeah, these go hand in hand with the performance audit recommendations and the changes that Director Mills has been making in the finance department since she started. And this includes implementing policies and procedures, which weren't, were absent from the department's operations. And so as we implement all of these things, we'll be able to address all these issues.
I, I think I'd like to, I need to think about it a little bit. I want to go over the information. Thank you. I'm, I'm leaning towards having something a bit more specific with timelines, figuring out how to, how to specifically address or what has been addressed, especially since we've been talking about this for so long. So maybe we can, can put this on a future agenda and figure out what are some of the right steps to make sure that, that we're hitting those milestones or actually correcting the problems. Thank you.
Yeah, I think what is missing is a project management plan with timeframes, milestones and progress, which we can put together and share with the council as a regularly expected update.
Thank you. The memorandum that you've prepared for us clearly outlines what you've discovered, your analysis and your recommendations. And as has just been mentioned, these recommendations deserve a lot more consideration and thought and a project plan in order to implement some of these things. And we also need to understand what has been implemented to date and what still needs to be done. And we don't really have a sense of how long some of these recommendations would take to be implemented. So we do need to follow through and we'll, we'll make a note that this needs to be on a future agenda. Thank you. Mrs. Shockley?
Thank you for being here tonight. So it's been brought up a couple of times that we are quite late in getting these accomplished. And it sounds like quite a few things were found while we have an annual audit. A lot of things were found this year that had to be changed. So, you know, as a council member, looking to assist my finance department in having the 2022 financials done more timely and 2023 done on time. Are there some things that came up this year that you saw that you don't expect to come up again? And is there anything that you can think of that we could do to proactively assist to get 2022 done?
The, the, the primary issue related to the 2021 audit was scheduling. You know, the folks that, that are in place now, I think stepped into a pretty deep hole and probably working day and night to dig themselves out of that hole. And we had a schedule in place where we were planning on beginning the audit. We had a team schedule. We came on site and the town was not ready. And I think, you know, it, it, it happened a couple of occasions. And unfortunately, when the town was ready, we did not have adequate resources to allocate to it. That's, that's just the way public accounting is today, you know? Or analogy maybe, but I called my doctor in May for a physical and it's scheduled for January 2023. I mean, that's, that's just the way things, things go. That's why our schedule is so important to be adhered to. Because if, if, if I've got to cut loose four resources, four people for two weeks that were scheduled and now I got to try to gather them back at some point down the road when everybody is scheduled 95%, if not over 100% in, in our firm and in any public accounting firm right now today. So the schedule makes or breaks us and it makes or breaks our clients relative to the timeliness of the product that we can deliver. That's, that's really it in a nutshell. So if, 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 if everything is ready, when we all agree it's going to be ready, we get here, we will get this thing out relatively quickly. But if, if we've got to wait around for information, if information is inaccurate and we've got to push it back to the, to, to, you know, our clients in order for them to fix it, then, you know, all bets are off. I don't know how, if they fix it overnight and we're back tomorrow, then, then that's fabulous. But if it takes three weeks for them to fix it, again, I'm, I'm in utter turmoil at that point in time because I've got resources that are in 11 different places. I've got to try to gather on the back and find the 700, 800 hours that it takes us to do this engagement. And that's not easy.
So I was kind of coming from that understanding that, you know, we weren't ready when you were. And so what I'm really looking for more is, do you, as someone who works with multiple municipalities, are there ways that you can see that we could assist on this and so there isn't so much back and forth? So that we are ready?
Yeah, I think what the town manager was speaking of a few minutes ago, relative to formulating a plan in order to address all of the weaknesses. I, I would say, you know, relative to that triage them as to what's, what's most important and what's least important. So you spend your time and efforts early on. I would encourage you, and maybe that's not going to happen overnight, to do some type of a time study relative to your finance office. Do they have enough resources to do what their task to do? I, I, I'd be shocked if you found out that they do, to be, to be brutally honest with you. I also am a realist when it comes to local government. You don't have all the resources in the world to be hiring, you know, another four people or five people or whatever the needs may be. And I'm just throwing that number out. I'm not in my head thinking you need four more people. But I can almost guarantee you, you don't have enough resources in there to do what their task to do. And it's not unique. It's, it's, it's quite honestly, through most of the clients that we serve, other than the cities of providences and, and the, you know, the major cities and municipalities. What happens because the resources are so tight is that when audit time comes, something else has to give. So if it's an accounts payable clerk that also has to do some year end close up, now accounts payable sits vacant for, for how many days? You know, if it's 50 hours worth of work to, to get the audit set stuff in, you know, ready for the auditors who are coming in next week, where do they find that time to do all the tasks that they do on a daily basis? So that's why I say you, you really got to do some, some type of a time study or analysis is to, to determine whether or not you have the, the appropriate level of resources in place.
I appreciate that feedback. Thank you.
Any other comments with members of the council? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Point of order, if I may, President Dixon.
Yes.
I see at least six members of the audience who are here to be present for certain licenses. And I don't know how long executive session is going to take. So I'd, I'd like to make a motion to move it to later in the agenda to help out those folks who are here tonight, so they're not here forever. We don't have a time when we'll be back from executive session. So I just want to throw a bone to those folks.
I'll second it.
Okay, so let me understand. You'd like to move executive session to what, let's put it in the agenda. So let's be specific about this. So would you all look at the agenda and make a decision on that?
I'd say probably after section E.
After section E? We also have a public hearing.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I would be in favor of putting it at the end of the agenda, to be quite honest, before adjournment or before public comment. No, no, yeah, after public comment. So that'll, that would be my motion to make it the new item J, make adjournment item K.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second to change the order of the agenda and to move the executive session from its current location in the meeting to after public comment. Do we have a motion in a second? I heard a motion in a second. Okay. Any discussion? All right, roll call, vote. Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
President Dixon, yes, five yes, no nays. The agenda. President Dixon? Yes. Five yes, no nays. The agenda has been changed.
I'd also like to suggest or make a motion that we move public comment before the licenses for discussion. And we can also motion for a second public comment at the end of, of the session as well, or just another one in addition, whatever the counselors.
Okay. So you're, you're moving to have an additional public comment in what location?
Before the licenses. So I guess what is section C now as licenses for discussion?
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Add a public comment that will be right after Ms. Mills' finance direct.
Yes.
Reports. Okay. So we have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion on that? Okay. Roll call vote. Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon? Yes. Five yes, no nays. The motion is approved. So the order of the agenda for people who are here, executive session will be at the end of the meeting after public comment. And we've also added an additional public comment, which will occur after Ms. Mills' report. Okay. Ms. Mills.
Hello. Honorable counsel, attaches the budget update for July 2022. This update represents 8.33% of the current fiscal year FY23. On July 28th, 2022, there was an all-day referendum in which the FY23 Town of Coventry budget was passed by the taxpayers. The tax bills were processed and sent to the company for mass mailings during this first week in August. Due to the tax bills being mailed out later than normal, the collection of the current year taxes for July were pushed out to later months. Below is a summary of the deficit to date for just July of 6.8 million due to the fact that we received little or no revenue because there was no bills out. To last year's, at this point in time, a $563,000 deficit. Revenues are currently at 0.91, lower than last year's 9.29%. No current year property taxes were collected in July due to the budget not being passed until late July 2028, 28, 2022. Tax bills were sent out in early August 2022. On June 27th, 2022, the governor accelerated elimination of motor vehicle taxes to be effective in FY23. This final phase out was supposed to be in FY24. The phase out of motor vehicle revenue received by the state is reflected in the state revenue aid, state aid revenue. So the current year motor vehicle taxes will now be shown as state aid. Expenditures are now at six, currently at 6.89%, lower than last year's 8.16%.
Okay. Thank you. We'll take each report. Is there any question or comment by members of the council on this first report, which is the budget update for July 2022? Ms. Ludwig?
Director Mills, can you go into just a little more information on the motor vehicle tax? So the phase out, is the phase out in conjunction, I guess, I, I know that approximately a year ago, we talked about a similar situation where funds were not put in to that in the first place because they said, oh, you're already getting COVID money. So we're not going to give you all the motor vehicle tax revenue from last year. So is, is this a totally separate item? This is about the actual phase out of the tax itself?
Yes, this is totally separate. So we were, we were supposed to be issuing motor vehicle bills this year and our tax assessor spent at least two months trying to get the database to work to what they call hold harmless. So you can't tax anyone more on their vehicle when they, as it was in the prior year. And because the vehicle's value had increased so much dramatically, as everyone knows, there was, it was a lot of work from an IT perspective to get actually to work. And it was going back and forth with the state to get approved. At the last, I shouldn't say the last minute, but the governor decided to accelerate this whole, accelerate the motor vehicle elimination up a whole year. So we are no longer going to collect motor vehicle taxes. So we're going to receive it through the state aid. Unfortunately, we are going to lose for those first, for the people that are the taxpayers that had purchased a vehicle, a brand new vehicle for FY23 year. Those, those are, we've never, we'll never collect on, nor will we get the reimbursement for.
Other questions by members of the council? Mrs. Shockley?
Sorry, that just led me to a question. So the government, the state is only going to reimburse us for cars that were purchased before this fiscal year?
So, yes.
And so they're going to assume that no new cars are ever bought and slowly these cars will get older and slowly we'll stop getting it from the state?
Well, we're not going to collect any for any new purchases. The phase out is coming from the state, and I don't think that's going to get eliminated. Obviously, we have to, that would be detrimental for the municipalities. But.
So they're going to keep it as if all cars stayed?
So we are, so we are going to be a little bit of a shortfall on the motor vehicle. I have to do this calculation and, and figure out just the maximum of what we're going to, we're going to get. But we're going to be a little short when we add the motor vehicle, what was budgeted plus the phase out in total can't exceed a certain amount that the state is going to allow. So I, so we are going to probably be short on that. The good, the, the, the plus side is the, on the projection or the budgeted amount for housing aid is going to go up by, from this budget by about 400,000. So hopefully the net effect will be minimal between the two.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Okay, moving on to the August report, Ms. Mills.
Yes, ma'am.
This is 50 of 140.
Attached is the budget update for August 2022. This update represents 16.6% of the current fiscal year FY23. Surplus for the period 7/1/22 to 8/31 is 5.8 million. At this time last year, it was 9.7, 9.7 million. Revenues are currently at 20.40% lower than last year's 29.51. No current property taxes collected, that's the same, no current property taxes were collected in July due to, due to the budget not being passed until late July. So expenditures are at 15.34% lower than last year's 16.17. And you'll see that the property taxes and the, the following month, and this is, I know this is August, but the following month, it, it levels out to what it was last year.
And any questions by members of the council on the August report? Okay, thank you, Ms. Mills.
Can I?
Turning to.
Can I actually ask?
Mrs. Shockley?
Yes, thank you. So on the yellow line, the, the COVID money. So this is giving it as we've, can you explain that, these numbers to me and why they changed from July to August?
So, so the COVID money is money. So just, just for future reference, I'm going to pull the COVID completely out of this report and put it as a separate report because it's really technically a special revenue. When the, when the federal CARES Act came in and under the Trump administration, we could use that, that, that funding for operations, and it was used for the police payroll. So it was probably reflected in Fund 1010. So what we want to do is for this year is break this out. So it'll be less confusing. What this is showing is the revenue less expenses for August. So we collected 5.2 million of that ARPA funds, which is under the Biden administration. So, so I'm subtracting it out of the total because we want to look to the real general fund. Next, next time we'll, we're going to show it separately. And I'm also going to probably show what we've been getting for opioid lawsuit. And those funds have to be specially spent for counseling and, and that kind of a prescription drug abuse. So I want to show those so you see the money coming in on a separate fund basis on those two big, big amounts.
Makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, turning our attention to the September report, reference page 65. Honorable counsel, attaches budget update for September 2022. This represents 25% of the current fiscal year. The surplus today for 7/1 to 9/30 is 4.1 million. Last year at this time, it was 6.2 million. Revenues are currently at 27.32%, lower than last year's 34.73. No, I'm going to repeat that. I already said that. Expenditures currently are at 23.73% lower than last year's 24.48%. So this next bullet, other vehicle maintenance, the gas, oil, their budget was at 40%, but I actually have the, some information from the GPW that they provided for me, as much we charge back the departments. So their gas and oil will be on, on target and on budget. So, so we basically, or we make a general entry to
charge back the police department and recreation and other, and other departments that are using DPW's gas.
Excellent. Questions by members of the council for the September report? Mr. LeBlanc?
On page 24 of 84, this, the finance department, it's 610, actual expenditures for the current fiscal year is 685, 190, and it represents 46% of the budget. But since we're only three months into the year, three months out of a 12, that's 25%, I just didn't know why we're almost at double the expense.
So finance, so finance has to pay 100% of the general liability and other liabilities. So that's why, so we have to pay 60% in July and the other 40% in August for the whole year. So that's why it shows.
And that would make sense. And then 250, the human resources. Again, you know, it would be 25% for three months out of 12, and then we're at 34. I just didn't know what's causing that increase.
Yes. It's the same, it's the same thing, but it's workers comp. The workers comp insurance has to pay, we have to pay 100% by August. So it's, it's the 60% in July and 40% in August. So, and that's for the full year.
Okay. So we're paying it now, but it's.
Yes.
It applies over the 12 months. Got it. And then on page 25 out of 84, I was just curious, it's reflecting about 60 grand that hit the CIP account. I just didn't know if we could get a refresher of what that 60 grand was.
That's the enterprise lease, the new vehicles that were purchased.
And it's running through there? What vehicle, what department does that relate to?
When you say it's running through, yeah, we have to separate. You know what? I gotta, I will have to check on that. Hold up. Can you hold on for a second?
Sure. Just curious.
Actually. You know what? I don't. Hello, Mr. LeBlanc. I don't want to, I'm sorry. I don't actually have it here, but I don't think it is enterprise. I think it's something that was purchased through DPW. I'll have to double check.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any other questions that we want to address to Ms. Mills? We all set? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mills, for your reports. We're catching up. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
We've now moved up a public comment. If there's any member of the public or anyone on chat who would like to ask a question at this time, please raise your hand. You will be recognized and we will have you come to the podium, give your name and address. Mr. Pasqua. Good evening.
Jonathan Pasqua, 222 Raccoon Run Road, Coventry, District One, Councilman-elect. I have right here emails from citizens of this town outlining serious issues with wind turbines, Johnson's Pond, concerns with the fiscal issues that we have, fire district problems. I have one email from one citizen, just one. This single email, which is politically motivating, and is, was my former opponent that I defeated, triggered a response that none of these people got when they asked for. All of these people wanted action. There was never a special meeting called for any of these issues. There was never any consideration of special counsel for these issues. And there's, there's a lot more than, than where these, these came from. But yet this single email from one concerned citizen triggered this response. That's, that's a slap in the face to the people of District One who are dealing with the turbine issues, which were constructed illegally. This is a slap in the face to the people on the pond who have been dealing with this issue now for going on three years. It's, and it's also disenfranchisement of my civil rights. This is, it's slap in the face of democracy. I, I know what's happening here. And the reason why, people ask, well, why is this being considered on Wednesday? Why is there a special meeting on Wednesday about my candidacy? Well, because some people are worried about their job performance and their future here in Coventry. Because I know a lot about what's going on. This secrets, there's no secrets here. And I know about meetings that were held the day after the election. I know about four people that were sitting in meetings and the conversations that were being had. I'm aware of correspondence that was sent to Chris Anderson before the election from this building explaining how to disqualify me. I am well aware of these things. And this is a slap in the face to the voters of Coventry. It's a slap in the face of democracy. This is, I, I can't believe I have to stand here and talk to you guys about this tonight. It's unbelievable. Johnson's Pond Civic Association several times had to beg to get on, on, on the agenda for executive session. I know how it's one of the people that was involved in those conversations. And we were told different times why we couldn't do it. But without hesitation, there was a motion put out for executive session to address this issue, really illegally. And that's why it was pulled off. My lawyer will be here. My lawyers will be here on Wednesday answering for me. This is wrong, and it's a slap in the face to the voters of Coventry. And the people behind it should be ashamed of themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Pasqua. Any other comments by members of the public?
Yeah, I will say something.
Okay. Please, please.
My name is Randy Burke.
And please come to the microphone, get your name and address, please.
My name is Randy Burke. I live at 21 Clark Mill Street.
Thank you.
You know, I look up here and I have issues with the town. I spoke to you, Ben, on the phone a couple of times about issues that I had with the billing department, namely fining contractors that they don't like or letting other contractors go without fines. Okay. Not once did you call me back. I had to keep calling your office. But yet, no, nothing was brought up to the council. Nothing was done about anything. What did you actually do about that? Anything? I'm asking you. Did you do anything? I hear you used the word honor earlier. What about integrity and stuff, huh? People voted here. People elected him. And you're going to just wipe him out just like that? What kind of integrity? What kind of, what kind of honor is up here? This is a disgrace. It's an outrage. I guarantee to people that are going to be vote, are going to be running for election in two years, they will not get elected again.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Please come forward. State your name and address, please.
Ernie Adololo, 84 Coventry Drive. As Mr. Pasqua was alluding to, that something like this, like his case made the agenda, I mean, executive session, when I know for a fact, before this election, our solicitor had meetings by phone with Mr. Anderson, which I think is a little bit unethical. And Mr. Marshant lives in an illegal apartment that was brought to your attention. And there was never an executive session about that. So to do something off of one person's email is actually ridiculous. And I cannot believe as public servants that you guys would even entertain.
And I cannot believe as public servants that you guys would even entertain such things. But you have proof that somebody is living in an illegal apartment, but yet choose not to do anything about that. And I know you can't comment on it, but that shows your integrity right there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nardololo. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment at this time? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to make a public comment? I see none on Zoom. You can raise your hand in the chat. I see none on Zoom. Anyone else here in the audience who would like to make a public comment? Ms. Ludwig. Um, Madam Clerk, would you please record that Ms. Ludwig has left the dais and what time she returns? Ms. Ludwig?
Jen Ludwig, Seventy Two Quid Drive West. To the council, town councillors and the public, I'm speaking at public comment because I was denied a request for an open agenda item. And also, the executive session item that was originally published on the Rhode Island Secretary of State's website was subsequently removed. Our election process is one of the cornerstones of our democracy, and I take the following issue extremely seriously. And I want to create transparency to the public on this possible town issue. On the third of November, local attorney Chris Anderson, who turned out to be the losing candidate for the District One council seat, sent an email with an attachment and signature to all town council members outlining sections of our town charter, specifically three oh three and fifteen oh one F, where he argued that no one in service to the town can be qualified candidate, such as a paid firefighter. I have a copy of that letter for the public record. I have never spoken with nor met Chris Anderson. After receiving this, I immediately sent it to our town solicitor and manager. One day after the election, Mr. Anderson, Anderson sent another letter to the councillors, again outlining his points of dispute about Mr. Pasqua's qualifications based on the wording within our charter. I also have a copy of that notice for the public record. Our current town solicitor recommended that the council seek outside legal advice on this matter. I then asked that this issue be transparently brought into public session for tonight's meeting, or at least into an executive session regarding potential future litigation. It was entered onto the executive session and published. I asked the town manager to start contacting attorneys. This was met by strong opposition by at least one councillor. Also, I asked the town manager to contact the Rhode Island Board of Elections to ensure we were procedurally following the right steps. However, I have come to learn that the Board of Elections cannot determine actual fitness of candidates. On November tenth, this agenda topic was removed from the executive session. As town councillors, we must uphold the town of Coventry's charter. And where there may be ambiguity in the language, specifically when a local attorney is sending multiple notices to our councillors, I feel it prudent to at let, at least request legal advice. For the last two years, this council repeatedly and consistently sought outside counsel on complicated issues like union contracts and turbines, as well as the services of multiple outside consultants for help in reviewing complex town issues. Therefore, on this serious topic of candidate qualifications, where there's a possible dispute in whether the town council is appropriately following our charter, I'm simply asking that the council please consider getting third-party legal advice on this matter. I did see earlier this afternoon that a meeting was posted for Wednesday on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, any other person who wishes to speak in public comment? Anyone else on Zoom? Okay, thank you. Public comment is now closed. Madam Clerk, please record the time. We're moving on to agenda, the next agenda, application for new campground license, Glamp Frogmore, twenty two sixty Victory Highway, Coventry, Rhode Island. Uh, reference pages seventy to seventy one. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
My second.
Thank you. Discussion. Uh, is there anyone here to represent Glamp Frogmore? Thank you. Please come forward. Please tell us more about your application, and please state your name and address, please.
Sure, um, Justin Peters, uh, twenty two sixty Victory Highway in Coventry. Um, so, hmm, uh, year and a half ago or so, um, on our, um, thirty acre property, we, uh, we made a, a glamp site, a fancy campsite essentially, um, kind of for fun COVID project. And then, um, we ended up listing it on Airbnb and, uh, you know, similar kind of platforms. It ended up being, um, um, successful. And so this summer, um, we did that again, and we just, we have two sites. Um, and then we've been going through the planning and zoning process, kind of simultaneous to us, um, uh, submitting our application for the, the campground, um, license. And so it's kind of been one is waiting for the other kind of thing. Um, and so we finished up with the, um, the, um, zoning board, I guess, two weeks ago. Um, and so now we're here hoping, um, that our campsite, um, or excuse me, our campground, uh, permit will be, um, approved. Basically, we were looking for a, uh, a special use permit through the zoning committee, which is what we were, what we were doing.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And, uh, your operating dates are October, excuse me, April fifteenth to, um, October thirty first. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. And I noticed it said two sites. Could you, I, I, my concept of a campground, which I've been in many campgrounds, is more than two sites. So could you explain this whole concept for us, please?
Sure. Um, so basically, there are, um, there are just two sites. They're probably, um, they're each probably about five hundred feet from each other, um, and from our house. Um, and we're, we're surrounded by the Audubon, um, property on one side, and then a, just a big piece of, um, open wooded land on the other. So in other words, they're kind of, you know, a half mile off the road. Um, but they are, they are indeed just two sites. One of them has a big, um, canvas wall tent on a platform. It's, uh, in that site. Um, sleeps four to six. It's usually more like three or four people. And then the other site is, um, is smaller, and it has a, a bell tent, a round tent, which is on a, uh, platform as well that sleeps, um, two to four people. And that's it. It's not a, it's not a, it's not the kind of situation where there's a bunch of sites where people are bringing in their own, um, tents, setting it up, taking it down. It's, it's a, and these tents have like a couch and a, and a king bed in them and that kind of thing. So it's, um, uh, to be honest, at, at first, um, you know, we, we didn't use, we weren't thinking of a, of a campground necessarily, but ultimately the, the way that the town defines campground, it is indeed what we're, what we're doing, even though it's quite different. So, uh, but anyway, two is, two is all we want, um, because it's just my wife and I that are, that are running it. So that's, that's what it is, and that's kind of, that's as far as we're, we're taking it, so.
With these two campsites, will there be water available? Are there facilities available? What, what is going to be available for those who will come to those sites?
Sure. So there's no electricity or, um, or running water. Um, however, there, we have a composting toilet in, uh, in each one of them. Um, and, you know, we, we, you know, we provide Poland Spring drinking water, that kind of thing, but otherwise it is camping. Um, there's, um, uh, so there, there's no, there's no power, there's no running water, there's no actual plumbing, you know? So there's no leach field or, um, anything like that. It's all kind of self-contained, um, even the, um, yeah, so I think, I, uh, I think I answered that.
So will people be coming with tents or RVs or what?
No tents, no RVs. The, the tents are already there. They're, they're ours and they're substantial.
Okay.
Um, uh, so there's, um, so they're on, they're on platforms.
Okay.
And they don't, like, we put them up in the spring and I'll, I'm taking them down next week, basically. Almost like a little cabin, but it's not actually, you know, solid construction.
Okay, um. And Mr. Marshon, uh, could you tell us about the police department and the zoning officer? Any concerns at all?
Uh, yes, this application is bid and reviewed by both, and there were no issues found, uh, we recommend it. It's acceptable.
Okay, any questions? Uh, Mrs. Lima?
So would you say essentially you're gonna reserve these kind of like Airbnb verbo style? Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I figured. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and then are we okay to approve this even though the application is missing the check mark next to the first item under the attachments with, with the application? It just got, it, according to this, it's missing the State Health Department of license approval, but are we okay to prove this?
Well, um, uh, so we did, we did reach out to, uh, it's the, it's a, right, it's the health department. Think is that what you're?
It's an application we have in the last section. It says, please attach the following documents with the license application. And you've got a, we've got a check mark here next to a letter from District Fire Chief. And then the other, the one, we have one that's not checked, letter of license approval from the State Health Department in accordance with Title twenty three, chapter one.
Yep, so I, I believe that's about, um, that's about running water. Um, and we don't have that. So we actually, I do have, I did, um, provide the zoning office with a, um, with a letter from RIDO stating basically that they didn't need to come inspect because we don't have running water. Um, so.
So, um, Mr. Marshon, or I think, um, Mr. Durfey is here. Can you just confirm we're okay there, uh, to approve even without that?
Yes.
Okay.
Just add the, um, I believe what the Department of Health checkbox is for is the, um, there's a threshold of how many people you serve water to, where you have to have it inspected and approved by the Department of Health every year, because you're in, in essence, serving water to the public and representing to them that it's drinkable. This doesn't apply, I'm pretty sure, because it does not meet the number threshold of how many people are gonna be consuming it. Uh, two people in tents is well below the threshold. That's why it's blank. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Uh, Mrs. Shockley.
Um, first, I happen to have heard of you because you were in a magazine that I, a friend had on our counter, and I'm like, what is this place in Coventry that they're speaking of? So congratulations.
Thank you.
Um, I just want to make sure because of the fact that the general law allows for more than they're asking for, um, that Glamp Frogmore has to, they can just go with what they're asking for in the license, correct? Um, Mr. Marshon or, um, Solicitor? I just want to make sure that they want to, they can't do more than two without coming back, even though in the general law, it says there can be twenty five camping units per acre of land.
The license is for two, if I'm not mistaken.
That's what the license is asked for. I just want to make sure that, you know.
He can come back with a plan to have more.
It's a different story for a different day. I just want to make sure, uh, they have to conform here. Thank you. It, it looks really fun. The magazine article was very good.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you. Are ready for the vote? Um, Vice President Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon, yes, five yeas, no nays. The motion is approved. The license is approved. Thank you very much. Next agenda item, application for additional hours, GGO New England LLC Doing Businesses Taco Bell number, store number four zero eight six six seven eight four, Tyo Avenue, Coventry. Um, reference pages seventy two to seventy three. Mr. Marshon, are there any concerns concerning this, uh, request for new additional hours license?
No, Madam President.
Thank you. Any issues by, or questions by members of the council? I need a motion and a second. Excuse me. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, questions by members of the council? Ms. Ludwig?
So originally, when I read it, it said, um, additional hours from two AM to six AM. So does that turn this into twenty four hours? Because I guess I'm getting confused with the, um, the new additional hours license. The last sentence on page seventy two says, entitled the license folder to operate continuously after six AM, but not after two o'clock AM. So are we all, are they requesting the two AM to six AM because that's the specific additional hours that makes them the twenty four hours a day?
No, this is actually the exclusion of the hours from two AM to six AM.
Okay, I'm confused. Um, why is additional hours highlighted then on their, on their application?
Uh, the licensing clerk just highlighted that. I'm not sure why.
Yeah, you have to apply to not work after.
You have to apply to not be open? From two to six AM?
This is a renewal, so it's not an application for hours then, because it's a renewal and it goes beyond the, the standard hours, uh, it goes up to two AM. It's just listed as an additional hours.
I could just, I believe the only reason it's on the agenda is because we didn't approve it last time because we weren't sure if they were asking for more hours. And to err on the side of caution, the council decided in its wisdom to hold it until we were sure. Now we're sure that you're not, that they're not going beyond the hours of the previous year, but it's still tabled from last time. So I think you're free to vote now, now that you have that information.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Marshon, any, uh, problems with this application?
No.
I see nothing listed on page seventy two. Um, any issues by members of the council? Okay, um, roll call vote. Vice President Ludwig?
Yes.
Um, Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon, yes, five yeas, no nays. The motion passes. The next item is application for additional hours only for Tyo Food and Snack LLC, eight fifty one Tyo Gavio Coventry. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Thank you.
My second.
Thank you, second. Okay, this is reference pages seventy four. Mr. Marshon, any problems with this application?
No, this is actually in the same establishment as the prior one. It's just two vendors operating out of the same building.
Okay. Members of the council, any questions? All right, roll call vote. Vice President Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon, yes, five yeas, no nays. The motion passes. Next. Application for Class F license with live show entertainment for St. Vincent de Paul Society fundraiser to be held at St. John and Paul Meeting Room, three forty one South Main Street, Coventry, Rhode Island, on December eleventh, twenty twenty two, from two PM to six PM. Reference pages seventy five to seventy seven. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Discussion. Mr. Marshon, any issues with this application?
None.
Any other questions? Okay. Roll call vote. Vice President Ludwig?
I'm just checking even to.
I was gonna do it after this.
Yes.
Yep.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon, yes, five yeas, no nays. The motion passes.
What would President Dixon, I'd like to make a motion to waive the, uh, license fee, um, for, for the, um, it's for the light, the live show, for the, uh, live show license, the, um, I believe that's the fifteen dollars or the hundred dollars?
We have a motion. Do we have a second to waive the fee?
I'll second.
Any discussion about waiving the fee? Ready for the vote? Vice President Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon, yes, five yeas, no nays. The motion passes. Next agenda item, application for Class F license, St. John and Paul Parish Corporation Comedy Fundraiser to be held at three forty one South Main Street, Coventry, Rhode Island, on November eighteenth, twenty twenty two, from seven PM to ten PM. Reference pages seventy eight to seventy nine. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Mr. Marshon, any concerns or issues?
No.
Roll call vote. Vice President Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
President Dixon, yes, five yeas, no nays. The motion passes.
Um, I'll make a motion to also waive the license fee for, uh, this charity event.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Vice President Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
President Dixon? Yes. The fee is waived. Next agenda item, tax assessors additions and abatements for November twenty twenty two. Reference pages eighty to eighty six. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. Um, Ms. Martini, welcome. You're here a little bit earlier than usual.
I like it.
You like it? Yes. We'll, we'll try to do that more often. Okay. Would you please go through the license and abatements for us and give us any highlights, please?
Oh, well, we have, um, abatements in the amount of twenty one thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars and eight cents. And we have additions on the prorated role and supplemental role. Prorated role is ten thousand dollars, nine hundred and eighty three dollars and four cents, sorry, and supplemental is nineteen thousand, three hundred and seventy eight dollars and twenty six cents.
Um, Ms. Martini, I noticed on the paperwork that you provided to us that many of these, uh, transaction dates indicate there's an appeal. So could you please explain to the public and the council? What is the appeal process that leads you to this result?
Every, um, real property owner or business personal property owner has the right to appeal their value. They have ninety days from the date the first tax bill is due to fill out the appeal form and get it to the tax assessor's office. And then I make a determination, um, with the, whatever they provide me as information and what I find on whether to change their value or not. Value can stay the same. It can go up. It can go down.
Okay. Any questions that any members of the council have on this report?
I just have a comment on the.
Certainly. It's still a blank.
On the resolution, uh, just says twenty twenty two twice. Take one of those off.
Um, what would, what should be there instead?
Uh, it's page eighty out of one forty three. It says the year twenty twenty two. It says it twice. So I just need to get rid of one of them.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you make that correction, please? Thank you. Ms. Ludwig?
Um, thank you for this. I just have a quick question. Um, if there, if there's an appeal on, um, um, I'll just use one of these equipment. What is the process? Do we actually go out?
I did.
And look?
I did.
So is this, for example, on like the tangible business tax?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, um, so they appeal it, you go out and check it and then you update the, the form. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions by members of the council? Okay, roll call vote. Uh, Vice President Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
President Dixon? Yes. Five years, no nays. The motion passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Martini, the next agenda item, resolution to approve an expenditure not to exceed seven thousand dollars to evaluate Hopkins Hill in West and Western Elementary School to determine if the proposed school bond would be eligible for an additional five percent reimbursement incentive from the, uh, Department of Education, reference pages eighty seven to eighty eight. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. Mr. Marshon, would you please, uh, give us a little more information about this request?
Yes, as part of the process of the school building committee, we're looking at opportunities to, uh, put together a package project that will achieve the greatest reimbursement possible from the state. And as part of that process, uh, Mr. Mario Correño, who's the Chief Operations Officer for the Rhode Island Department of Education, recommended that we, um, invest in doing a facility capacity index study of the Hopkins Hill Elementary School and the Western Coventry Elementary Schools because they were below the sixty five percent threshold. And if the report comes back that they're above that threshold, uh, we could get another, um, additional five percent of state aid in the reimbursement of a possible school project. That would necessarily involve improvements, uh, of some kind or another to either those schools or the replacement of one or more of those schools in the, in the total plan. So, um, the, the cost of this revaluation is seven thousand dollars. He proposes that that would simply be deducted from the town's, uh, state aid in, in the spring, late, late winter. And, uh, so it wouldn't be a, a cash out of pocket expenditure, but it would be reducing our state aid reimbursement by that amount and the state would perform that study.
Mrs. Lima?
Um, Mr. Marshant, um, accurately reflected the, uh, memo and the resolution as Chair of the School Building Committee. Um, I humbly ask for my council colleagues' support on this, um, for seven thousand dollars, uh, in the grand scheme of a multimillion dollar project and the savings we could see in the race to seventy percent reimbursement from the state. This is a necessary and very worthwhile next step. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Ludwig? Uh, I just had a question. I don't know if this is for, um, Councilor Lima or for, for Ben. Uh, I was just interested, the expenditure here for seven thousand, does this meet some sort of minimum threshold or something? Which is why we can take it from the state aid versus when we had to use the, um, general fund for the expenditure for the architects a few, I think it was a few weeks ago?
The way that this was explained by Mario, I believe this ends up being a reimbursable expense within the project.
Yep. I know this is really tiny. Um, so, um, I just want to check. So this is something that was already agreed at your meeting to ask for this fund to come out of the state reimbursement?
Yes. Yep. This is part of conversations we've had at the school building committee level.
Okay. I just don't want to get into any of it. I don't want anyone upset with us that we cut their state aid by seven thousand dollars without asking them.
Nope. Um, this was brought up at the meeting just last Wednesday that this was going to be a resolution on this council agenda and everybody at the, at the meeting was, um, in agreement with that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments? Uh, so, Mrs. Lima, if we were to get, um, five percent reimbursement and, um, incentive, what would that bring us up to possibly?
Without doing this step, we cannot get to the seventy percent total potential reimbursement.
So this helps us get to the seventy percent?
This is one of the, um, state's goals slash benefits to, uh, work towards to get the maximum reimbursement from the state for the project.
Okay, excellent information. Thank you so much. Roll call.
Just one comment.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Uh, I just think it's, um, very important to read one sentence from Mario. It said, meaning for the seven thousand dollars Coventry could set itself up to receive an additional four point two five million dollars in state aid, uh, based off this vote. Just wanted to call that out.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up. It's an important piece of information. Okay, roll call vote. Uh, Vice President Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon? Yes. Five years, no nays. The motion is approved. Next, um, Town Council updates. Um, I just want to mention again that we have several openings. Uh, these are all listed on our town website. The town clerk is also preparing a list of boards and commissions with descriptions of the role of a member. Um, we've asked about this several times. Unfortunately, the charter and the Coventry Code is silent concerning roles for many of the boards and commissions. So I've sent out a message to the Chair of each board and commission to submit a statement relating to the role. These will be compiled and available on the website. So I just want you to know that we are following through on suggestions that have been made by council members. Um, but we just don't have that data and we need to obtain it from the, uh, chairpersons of the boards and commissions. Uh, I see, um, one who's still here, so, um, you should have received an email from us already or will be receiving it soon. Thank you. Uh, next, another item of Town, uh, Town Council Executive Session Meeting Minutes Update. The executive session meeting minutes have been taken by the legal council for many years or were taken by legal council for many years. During my first two years on the council, I never actually even saw any meeting minutes. And when I started January seventeenth, twenty twenty one, when Mr. Goram was not present and unable to continue taking meeting minutes, um, I took them and minutes were always sent to the town clerk and placed in the vault. Based on the state laws, the minutes of closed session shall be made available the next regularly scheduled meeting unless the majority of the body votes to keep the minutes closed pursuant to forty two, forty six, four, and forty two, forty six, five. I recommend that the council at a future meeting very soon review its bylaws and to determine, uh, what they may want to do regarding the review of, um, meeting minutes. Um, and I have no other messages. Um, those are the two items that have been brought up and we've, um, taken care of those by giving some updates. Um, Mr., Mr. Marshon, your update, please. You have one on the license approval process?
Yes, just to let the council know that after the previous meetings, uh, I met with the town clerk's office and reviewed the, um, process that they have for placing license renewals on the agenda and suggested that they, uh, prepare a cover memo explaining the details. And, um, even with, even tonight, uh, the town clerk and I are thinking that we might want to retool the forms so that they are, uh, uh, easier to understand and follow for the future meetings.
Thank you so much.
President Dixon?
Yeah, Mr. LeBlanc?
If I could go back to F one for one second, I just wanted to.
Sure.
Um, bring up, um, I had sent an email to you specific to the school committee, uh, because
Yes.
Um, they actually, uh, will have an executive session and at the following meeting, they will all review and then approve those meeting minutes. And I made a recommendation and I think that's what we should be doing, uh, because executive session is so important. Um, so I, I just want the full council to know that, um, the school committee already is, um, doing what I think the town council should be doing, where we should all be reviewing the minutes, just like we do public session meeting minutes.
Excellent. Uh, thank, thank you for your suggestion and by all means, that will be on an agenda for a future council to discuss how it may wish to amend all its, um, rules of conduct for the meetings.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Okay, so that will be on it and, um, you'll be able to do that. Plus there are, there may be a few other items that need to be discussed too. Okay, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Uh, the next agenda.
Actually, I'm sorry, Mr. Shockley. Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to say, as far as licenses go, um, beyond just approvals, um, I don't know how often we look at and update what we charge for licensing or for different fees. And it just sprang to mind both because you were discussing it here and because the difference between a license for a comedy act and a license for a musical act for the same location was eighty five dollars, which seems like a large difference for very similar asks. So I don't know whether it should be closer to a hundred or closer to fifteen, but it seems like we're very arbitrary with what we charge for different things. And I'm wondering if there is any sort of process that's used or conformance that we're supposed to have with, you know, as a municipality. It, it just really does stand out that if I want to listen, if I want to perform comedy, it's one amount. And if I want to play music, it's a different amount.
And, uh, the town clerk just knew that it's set by state. Lucky us.
Well, it makes sense. Thank you.
And aren't you working, Mr. Shockley?
I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, uh, next agenda item, um, discussion of the, um, RFP for fire service study and the selection of a consultant, reference pages eighty nine to ninety one. At the last meeting, we heard presentations from Dynamics Consulting Group and Matrix Consulting. Um, and then as a result of that, um, we asked our town manager to get references for each. And he provided the information that he got from references, um, in our packet, starting on page eighty nine, uh, ninety and ninety one. Is there a motion and a second for a particular consultant for the fire service study? Mrs. Lima?
Uh, to get discussion rolling, um, I'll make a motion to award, uh, Dynamics Consulting.
A second.
Mr. LeBlanc, a second.
Okay, fine. So we have a motion and a second to award the RFP to Dynamics Consulting Group. Discussion. Mrs. Lima?
Just briefly this evening, um, based on the presentation given by, uh, Dynamics at the last meeting where we spoke with them. And, um, I appreciate the references collected by Mr. Marshant. Um, nothing in particular has really compelled me to want to go with Matrix, who I believe was thirty to forty thousand dollars more in their quote for this, uh, this project. Um, so that, uh, was the influence for my decision this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Shockley?
Um, I also appreciate the reference check. Um, I like that multiple references of Dynamics are thinking of working with them again, um, on strategic plans or, um, other moving forward items for their towns. Um, one actually did rehire them to assist already. Um, so when you work with a vendor and then you want to go back like that, I think that's a real positive. Um, I wonder with Matrix, did they list the town of Lincoln as a reference? And did we try to reach out there only because of the fact that it's another Rhode Island town that was looking to do something very similar to what we were doing? They're not listed on the pages that.
They were not listed in their reference.
Okay. Um, but yeah, I had already, um, thought that Dynamics gave a far more, um, compelling involved, let's say, dynamic, um, presentation. Um, the effort that they put in really showed and I was very impressed. Um, and the reference check seems to definitely validate that.
Thank you. And I was very impressed with the presentation by Dynamics Consulting Group. In addition to that, um, I was really very pleasantly surprised when I saw the references and how enthusiastic the references were and how articulate they were and actually defining the qualities that they'd liked, uh, with working with this particular company. So it really was outstanding. You usually don't see such high rating, uh, high rated, um, references come through for another company. Um, any other comments? All right, are we ready for a vote?
Uh, Ms. Ludwig?
I don't, um, I didn't, I didn't see a huge difference between the two proposals. I did like, uh, the previous work that, uh, Matrix had done with us. Um, I think if the, the price was a little bit closer, it'd be very easy for me to try and, try and fight for working with Matrix, just because we have a relationship there. Sometimes that's easier to get started and working with people. Um, but it sounds like we have at least three in favor of, um, Dynamics. Uh, and I can, I can, um, get on board for that.
Okay, excellent. Any other comments by members of the council? Okay, roll call vote. This is a vote to approve giving an, uh, a contract to Dynamics Consulting. Vice President Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
President Dixon? Yes. Five years, no nays. The motion passes. Next agenda item, discussion interaction, review the draft of the RFP for a three to five year facility plan.
Point of information, if I could, um, did we already agree where we're paying that out of for this, for this award?
Uh, no, that was, um, that was not decided.
Okay, so.
Add it to the budget, didn't we add it? We added it in.
We, we added forty thousand to the budget for the fire study. Uh, the quote came in at sixty thousand, I believe. So we're short.
Okay, so, um, just to be sure and just to have it on the record, I don't know if we want at our next meeting to have a formal resolution with where the money's coming from, just so everybody's clear and everything's in writing?
How about, uh, when I reach out to Dynamics, uh, I'll prepare an agreement for the council to approve and which will in, in include the, the cost and the funding.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you, President Dixon.
Uh, Madam Clerk, would you put that, um, item as a placeholder on the next meeting? Assuming the information comes through. Thank you. All right, the next agenda item, thank you for bringing that up, Mrs. Lima. Uh, the next agenda item is review the draft of the RFP for a three to five year facility plan for the town of Coventry. Reference pages ninety two to one oh six. You're not asked to make a motion this evening, but simply to, uh, review the plan for any additions or changes that you might want to, uh, relate to either Mr. Marshant or Miss, our assistant, um, manager. So based on reading of the proposal, what comments do you have? So based on reading of the proposal, what comments do you have? Any, any view that can be passed on to the assistant manager? Mrs. Lima?
So just to be certain, this is only for town facilities, nothing that would be related to the school department. The only reason I ask is, I think what we're finding with the school building committee exploration is that there, there's going to be a lot of shuffling and intermingling potentially of buildings and use. So, and not to mention the plan that we're working on is actually a twenty-year plan. So I don't know, it's, it's always been murky to me where the, the responsibility and liability and maintenance of the school buildings falls. I mean, I've heard they've, they're technically town buildings, but the school pays to maintain them. So, and I know, I just want to make sure too that we're sensitive to if the school buildings are included, any requests or review that the school committee and the school department might have for an RFP like this. Just wanted to clear that up.
Thank you. Mr. Marshant?
So in response to that, yes, there is some ambiguity and it is a kind of a difficult scope to, to define. While the schools are occupied as schools by this school, Coventry Public Schools, they own them, maintain them and are responsible for them in their budgets, separate from the town. That falls under the, their, the school committee's authority to regulate their budget. And the town has no say over how they manage those assets. But once the, a school is vacated, it reverts to town ownership. And then it becomes the town's responsibility to manage it. And so for the purposes of this scope of an RFP, there really isn't any way to anticipate what schools may become available or not and which ones we should be studying or not.
List at least two of them right now, right?
So I guess, in, in looking at this in a broad way. So hypothetically speaking, if buildings did come offline, will we then have a process in place with the appropriate town department to then adequately assess and fold it into a facilities plan that's developed from this?
I think we could certainly put together a plan like that. If, if this is something that the council moves forward on, this facility plan could then be a template for looking at other buildings, either from in-house using this same template or using the same consultant that may be retained to do this study to come back and look at one building specifically and give recommendations on that as a, as a separate contract item.
Okay. Beyond that, just comment question, I will say, I think this is long overdue. I'm happy to see this on an agenda tonight. This is going to certainly help us in spending our money more wisely, strategic planning. And with all the conversation at the school building committee level about adequate utilization of space, assets and resources, I think it, we're well overdue to have that discussion about town assets and property and facilities. So thank you for putting this together and I look forward to hearing feedback from other counselors and eventually getting this formally out to receive proposals. Thank you.
And I had conversation with our assistant manager and told her that I would like to see the addition of the following assets. The old Summit Library and needed, needs to be listed because it is something the town owns. The Reed Schoolhouse, one of our historic buildings that needs to be on this list. And the Oak Haven School, which was given back to the town by the school department. So it's currently in our hands, although I believe that there are deed restrictions on it. But those are three things that should be on this list in addition to all of the items that are already listed on page ninety-four and ninety-five of this proposal. So Oak Haven School, Reed Schoolhouse and the Old Summit Library. Mr. LeBlanc?
Kind of going along with that. Just, I didn't see any like parks, playgrounds, courts, basketball courts, anything like that. Would that also, could we also include that in this? Because that's obviously muni-owned and we certainly have costs associated with that for the next three, five years.
I think typically for a facility study, we're looking at buildings and the built environment. Parks and playgrounds and things are more situated, you know, better considered under the CIP, unless you're looking at, you know, selling the land or posing the land for alternative developments. But with that ambiguity about knowing what the council's direction and purpose is, it's hard to tell the consultant what it is we're actually asking them to evaluate on a, on a park or a field or a playground. But if we want to look at CIP and investments and that's kind of a different analysis as to whether a building is fit for repurpose, rehab or demolition or sale.
I understand. I just, there's a lot of money associated with those fields, courts and park and recs departments. So I just don't know, maybe we can do an RFP specific for that department, I guess, at some point.
I, we have, I have discussed it with the Parks and Rec Director Blumenthal about the need for a master parks plan, a, a, a master plan for parks and recreation facilities that would look at, at the community center in terms of this, which is, I'm not sure if that was listed or not and not seeing it, but.
I mean, I see her office, the park and recs.
Okay, yeah.
That's about it.
So the recreation office is in there, but, but that's because it's a building. But as far as a, a plan for the parks and recreation and services to the city and the level of service and the quality of the courts and the fields, that really would go into a, a master plan for parks.
Okay.
Which is a subcomponent of the comp plan. But this comp plan's only going to, going to touch on the very surface of it. A, a parks master plan would do a deep dive.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we know that Mr. Marshant, as our town manager, can issue an RFP, does not need to be approved, the issuing of it, we have done that in the past. What kind of action does the council want to take this evening on this three to five year facility plan?
It's long overdue, in my opinion.
Okay, so do we want to make a motion, just authorize the town manager to issue an RFP for a three to five year facility plan?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
Ms. Ludwig?
I would also like to make sure that the buildings that President Dixon mentioned are on there when it gets issued. And just to check, is Oak Haven the one that Gary Cody referred to as a junkyard?
Yes.
Okay, so I think she mentioned at least three of the schools. I do understand there may be some difficulty with, with, for example, the Reed Schoolhouse. It's a historical building, et cetera. But most of the other buildings, I think you outlined, are, are in grave and desperate need of repair. So, thank you.
Well, this is an onsite facility condition assessment, so we have a historic building, yes, but we need to understand what the assessment of that building is and what kind of needs it might have. So it should be included. All right, we have, we're in the discussion. Any more discussion? Any other council members have comments or concerns? Okay, let's have a vote to authorize the town manager to issue an RFP for a three to five year facility plan for the town of Coventry. Roll call vote, Vice President Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mr. Shockley?
Yes.
President Dixon, yes. Five yeas, no nays, the motion is approved. Next agenda, G3, request for zone change to plat thirty-two lot seventy-eight at ninety-six Tyogue Avenue from R twenty residential, which is the current zoning, to general business, which is proposed zoning pursuant to Coventry Code two fifty-five hyphen eighteen hundred B, requested by John Vikkowitz and Joanne Plant to be set for our public hearing on December twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Reference pages one oh seven to one thirty-eight. First of all, I would like to call on Mr. Durfee to give us a little more information about the timeline and what we need to be doing here this evening.
Hi, Herb Durfee, Planning and Development Director. Basically, you, what you have before you, as you may recall, is a zoning amendment change to a particular parcel of land at the, where Tyogue Street runs into West Warwick. Ninety-six Tyogue Street, basically, when you received this, you needed to refer it to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission had forty-five days by which to provide a recommendation to you, which has been completed. That is part of the packet that you are part of the, that your tonight's packets. In addition, from the time that you received that request, statutorily, you had to hold a public hearing within sixty-five days of that receipt. As a courtesy, Joanne waived that requirement for you with the understanding that you had a busy agenda when we were trying to get the thing scheduled, but obviously with the hope that you would schedule a public hearing as soon as you could within that, as close to that timeframe as possible. So you actually, as a council, have been relieved of that sixty-five day requirement. And then lastly, once you hold that public hearing, according to the process, you need to render a decision on that amendment within forty-five days. So there's, there's three dates that you had to deal with from that standpoint. The one that you're dealing with right now is simply scheduling the public hearing. What will happen once you schedule that public hearing is then we'll notice it. The notice requirements require three consecutive weekly notices immediately prior to the date of that public hearing. And that is done in collaboration with the person making the request. They basically pay for it. We help oversee that particular process, but they're ultimately responsible for that, essentially on your behalf.
Thank you very much, Mr. Durfee, and thank you for providing so much information to us in our packet, which clearly outlined what we all need to understand and know for, for following process. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. May I have a motion to set a public hearing for December twelfth, twenty twenty-two, based on the request for a zone change to plat thirty-two lot seventy-eight at ninety-six Tyogue Avenue from R twenty residential to propose zoning pursuant to Code two fifty-five hyphen eighteen hundred B?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
One second.
Discussion by members of the council. This is, we're just voting to set the public hearing for December twelfth. Question, Ms. Ludwig?
Just want to see if there's any concerns, just from location standpoint or anything, because I know it falls under your district, Hillary. I mean, I'm familiar with the location. I did watch the Planning Commission meeting. They approved it. Were there any residents that had any concerns or anything before we set the date?
I wasn't able to tune into that planning meeting where they discussed it, but I have not received any outreach via email or phone to date regarding this zoning change.
Okay.
If I could just comment on that question.
Certainly, Mr. LeBlanc?
That was kind of one of my concerns, because I actually don't know how many people know that this request is being made. I know that we have public meetings, but let's just be honest, I think like maybe a hundred people watch our meetings. So I did ask the, the director, Mr. Durfee, just about how many notices are going to be mailed. And if I could just, I'll just read the list. Town of West Warwick, Town Council, Kent County Water Authority, two business addresses on Tyogue in West Warwick, nine houses in West Warwick. Two more houses on different streets. There's a homeowners association, Red Brook Meadow. They'll also be receiving these notices on Tyogue Ave. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, there's seven addresses on Tyogue Ave as well. So that's the complete list. And so they're going to get the notices and I think that's when they're going to realize that this is actually happening.
Thank you for calling that to our attention and thank you for following through with Mr. Durfee to get that list and presenting it in public study today. Thank you so much.
And thank you, Mr. Durfee.
Point of information, if we could, I don't know if we can, I don't, if this is even on the West Warwick Town Council's radar, maybe to reach out to, I believe, I'm not sure which ward in West Warwick this is, but I don't know, or someone could maybe let me know to inform them, because it sounds like half of that list that's being notified are West Warwick residents, because it's right on the line.
Mr. Durfee, please take note of that.
Be cooperative with them.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to set a public hearing on December twelfth, twenty twenty-two regarding this request for zone change. Roll call vote, Vice President Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mr. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon, yes. Five yeas, no nays, the motion passes. Next item, public hearing. May I have a motion and second to open public hearing at eight fifty-six?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Roll call vote, Vice President Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mr. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon, yes. Five yeas, no nays, public hearing is now open for a request to approve a transfer of Class B liquor license with new victiming dance and live show entertainment license for Harris Bar and Grill Incorporated, doing businesses Harris Bar and Grill, six sixty-sixth Main Street to Moses Management LLC, doing businesses Harris Bar and Grill, Jeremy Moses, reference pages for us at one thirty-nine to one forty-three. Who is here to represent the applicant?
Hello, my name is Jeremy Moses.
Your address, please?
Two zero one Lipid Avenue, Cranston.
Thank you. Please explain or give us more information about the request to transfer the license.
Attempting to purchase the, the restaurant, the business from the Calico family and pretty much run it the same way, food and beverage. And so that's what I'm here for tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any member of the public who would like to make a statement during this public hearing about the transfer of this license? I see none in the audience with us. Is there anyone on Zoom? If you'd like to make a comment during this public hearing, please raise your hand in the chat. I see no hands raised. Comment from, see, Ms. Ludwig?
This, this was just passed down to me, so I, I don't know who's supposed to read this. So the town received to our clerk's office from Sinapi Law Associates, who are saying that they've been retained to represent the above clients in a bill for Horizon Beverage for five hundred sixty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents. Does this sound familiar?
That's probably to the current owners of the Harris Bar and Grill. I don't know anything about that. I haven't taken over the business yet. I haven't purchased the business. So this is all preliminary. If I get approved, we're pretty much going to close on the same day. But I do know that the approval of the license transfer, he has to be current with all his, his vendors.
This is saying that that person is not, so maybe we can get a copy to Mr. Moses.
Will we come up with?
Actually, we had an email from the licensing clerk.
Okay.
She emailed this to you today.
She did? Okay.
Yeah, but it was late in the day, it was probably like four thirty.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Garum, comment?
I believe it's appropriate to, you can approve this transfer contingent upon that bill being paid to the creditor. The statute authorizes that and.
Wouldn't we, wouldn't we want to say all vendors, just to have a catch-all?
Well, yeah, I mean.
They just had a letter from one, just to say. Do a catch-all.
You want to. I don't want people lining up in front, in front of the place saying their own money, but.
Okay.
This is a claim that was submitted in writing, which is what the statute requires. You have to submit your claim so that everyone knows what it is and the town council can consider what it, what it is. Member LeBlanc, if you want all other creditors, but I don't know how we're going to articulate that.
First of all, we're still in public hearing, so I need to close public hearing before we address the motion.
Sure.
Okay, is there any other comment that anyone would like to make while we're in public hearing? Thank you, Mr. Moses.
Thank you.
They have a motion and second to close public hearing at eight fifty-nine.
So moved. I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
I have a question.
Ms. Ludwig?
Yeah, I think we have to do an updated motion also. So a quick question. So maybe this is just a formality. So Mr. Moses is here. Mr. Moses has signed the application. Yeah, why, why don't we have anything signed from the Clayhills? Yeah. Why don't we have anything signed from the Colicchios? Like, we're not going to, like, I don't have anything signed from them. Oh, wait, no, signature of transferring, maybe? Maybe this isn't.
I believe that's it.
Okay.
Point of order, I don't think there's any motions to update, because the only motions made have been to open public hearing and close public hearing. We haven't made any about approving or rejecting the license.
We're just on closing public hearing right now. I asked for a discussion on closing public hearing, seeing none on that. Roll call vote. Vice President Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mr. Shockley?
Yes.
President Dixon? Five yeas, no nays. Public hearing is now closed. We now move on to the next item. Council may have a motion to approve the transfer of Class B liquor license with new Victor Ling Dance and Live Show Entertainment License from Harris Bar and Grill Incorporated, doing businesses Harris Bar and Grill, six sixty-sixth Main Street to Moses Management LLC, doing businesses Harris Bar and Grill, reference pages one thirty-nine to one forty-three. Okay, may I have a motion?
You didn't include the caveat on the end.
I would expect that that would be an amendment to the motion that we have before us.
But we know we need to do it, so why not just do it right out of the gate?
We can do that if you wish. So may I have a motion to approve the license, transfer of the license contingent upon all bills being paid by the creditors, being paid by the owners to the creditors? Is that what we're looking for here?
Sure.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Contingent upon meeting state law requirements.
There you go.
That that brings it down to one, as far as I know, but
I'll make a motion.
It's fine.
President Dixon.
Thank you. A second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, you have the wording for the revised motion? Thank you. Roll call vote. Vice President Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mr. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon? Yes. Five yeas, no nays. The motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Before we move into executive session, we will have our second public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Please raise your hand. Be recognized by the chair and come forward. Say your name and address. And if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. In the chat, the IT administrator will enter you into the building. Is there anyone here who would like to make an additional public comment? I don't see anyone with us this evening who is raising a hand. Anyone in chat? I see none. Okay, public comment is now closed. They have a motion and a second to go into executive session, close pursuant to Rhode Island General Law, forty-two, forty-six, five, A-one, discussion of job performance, carriage, physical and mental health of a person or persons, specifically for the council to discuss the evaluation of the town manager at nine oh three P M.
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The council will now move into executive session. I expect that we'll be there approximately. We have to vote. Oh, I'm sorry.
Open session vote.
Excuse me.
Roll call.
Roll call. Thank you. I'm so excited. It's not midnight. Maybe that's
Not midnight yet.
Vice President Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mr. Shockley?
Yes.
President Dixon? Five yeas, no nays. We're now moving into executive session. After executive session, for those of you who are here, we will just be going into adjournment. So if you want to see us adjourn, that's fine. Otherwise, have a great evening, everyone.
We're ready to begin. Good evening, everyone. The council met an executive session to discuss the following: Closed pursuant to Rhode Island general law 4246-5A1, discussion of job performance, character, physical and mental health of a person or persons, specifically for the council to discuss evaluation of the town manager. A discussion took place and no votes were taken. May I have a motion and second to seal the minutes of the executive session?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Thank you. Roll call. Vice President Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mr. Shockley?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon? Yes, five yeas, no nays. The motion passes. May I have a motion to adjourn from an executive session at 10:06?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second? Any discussion? Okay. Roll call, vote. Vice President Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mr. Shockley?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon? Yes. Five yeas, no nays. The motion passes. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting of the town council?
No, we adjourned from executive session.
That was the executive session. Motion and second to adjourn town council meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. And roll call, vote. Vice President Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mr. Shockley? President Dixon? Yes, five yeas, no nays. The motion is adjourned at 10:07. Thank you.